Pass back around, everybody gets a chance to see. Six thirty?
Good evening, we will call to order our regular September meeting for USD 348 Board of Education. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved?
Second.
Susan has moved and Chris has seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, at this time I'd invite us to stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Organizational items. This is a time for parent, family, and community engagement opportunities and/or announcements to take place. So if building administrators have anything you would like to announce or include, you're free to do so at this time.
Okay, our homecoming week kicks off on Sunday, October 1st. So homecoming week is fast arriving, that will be when we have a Powerpuff Flag football tournament between the classes. So signups are currently happening up at the high school. And then we also will be hosting on Wednesday, October 4th, a community pep rally. And Stuko and Mrs. Hefner sitting in Avotni and Autumn Weiss have been working very hard with Stuko on some changes. The parade will begin at 8th and Grove Street and travel south, turning left on High Street and heading east, or they will turn left on 7th Street and head back to Grove to unload. But then once they unload, then they will head over to Sullivan Square for the community pep rally that was similar to last year. So I just want to highlight, that's October 4th. And we have sent out communication on like that, the theme is "There's No Place Like Home", BHS Homecoming, October 4th, community pep rally that starts at 6:00 PM with the parade. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a few announcements to share. And please, if I have any of these dates wrong, don't hesitate to correct me. But on September 20th, which is Wednesday, there's a blood drive at the high school, right? Yes, and that, unlike past blood drives, is going to be a day-long undertaking-ish in the spirit of supporting Team McCain and Lila Strong. I know there was additional planning around that to make that extra thoughtful for that blood drive this year. So, thank you for the leadership on that. Also, I would be remiss and also in big trouble if I did not announce that the Baldwin Education Foundation's Brat Fest is coming up on October the 7th, that's on a Saturday. The Baldwin Education Foundation spent Friday, this past Friday, awarding teacher grants at all four buildings, which was a very exciting thing to be able to do. And the Brat Fest is a big driver of that fundraising, so October 7th is that. Want to give a shout out to our marching band who totally rocked it at the state fair. They received a one rating for their performance there and want to congratulate them on that. Also, if you are a person who enjoys Sonic, Sonic has recently partnered with the BHS Booster Club to do Winning Wednesdays. That is the first Wednesday of the month. And every first Wednesday of the month during the hours, I think of five to eight, I might be wrong, but it's evening hours, first Wednesday of the month, a portion of their proceeds go completely to BHS. So if you're needing Route 44, that's a good time to get it. And I think, what else did I have on my notes here? Oh, I also wanted to thank the Lumberyard Art Center. A few weeks ago, they, they're quilting queens, as I call them, but the quilting guild that is partnered with the Lumberyard Art Center actually partnered with our high school volleyball team to make quilts, which was really neat, it's neat when those community collaborations can happen. But again, it's a lot of extra volunteer time that we want to make sure to acknowledge and thank. That was partnered with the high school girls volleyball team and the family of Brenda Shawley to make really special shirts, or quilts that are made out of their shirts. One final thing, on a note that's a little more serious, but also important to mention, September is Suicide Awareness Month. And so we want to make sure to mention that 988 is a resource, there's lots of advocacy and awareness going on at all levels, as age-appropriate about that, so I want to make sure that's on your radar too. Board members will note in our consent agenda tonight, if you've had a chance to look over all of that, approval of donations. The Baldwin High School Booster Club has donated a motorized flag to the school. And so that donation has been received, will be officially received once we vote on it. But they had a really great BASH outing this year and all of the fundraising that goes along with that. So again, want to just say thank you to the ladies of the Booster Club and the BASH Committee. In particular, the result of all that work is a donation that you will be approving tonight, that is for the purchase of a motorized flag that will hang in our gym. So with that, are there any other announcements? If not, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. All right, item C, consent agenda, is there a motion for approval?
Phil moved?
Second.
Susan has moved and Phil has seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye and raise your right hand. Motion carries, six zero. And moving on to recognition time. First up is from Baldwin First United Methodist Church, United Methodist Women, actually they're called United Women of Faith now, and I still can't remember it because it's a reverse acronym, I think it's supposed, it's UWF, which is confusing to me, but formerly known for many years as United Methodist Women. They put together these gigantic baskets for teachers. And I had, there's, look, I mean, these are not small baskets. And these went around all over the place throughout the district. One came to the district office too, right? Came to you.
And I am the student body president.
My name is Harper Schoendoller, I'm a senior and I am the student body vice president.
My name is Mary S. Fore, I'm also a senior, I'm the student body secretary.
And I'm Avery Bergen, I'm a senior and I'm student body treasurer.
First, we want to thank you for your time today. We're going to be showing you a video montage of what we like to call the bay. The bay is the area in our school where the lockers used to exist, but recently we have done some renovations for it.
This video will showcase the many positive effects of the bay so far this school year. The video will explain why additional furniture will improve the space and the student environment as a whole.
We decided to take a firsthand approach with this video by asking students directly how they've utilized the bay this year and also why furniture would benefit them.
Now, without further ado, here's our video pitch.
Updating the library. With your help, our next stop is phase two, which includes furnishing the spaces. The bay is utilized as a study space and also a great space to hang flyers and distribute information. We also have the Brain Break coloring poster for people to participate in when they need a break from studying. Dylan, what's one way to use the bay this year?
Well Avery, during college enrollment, I love using the bay, it's very calm, very quiet, and the only thing that does kind of suck is there's no furniture. Well, the chairs are nice, but I'd like a couch or a chair or some kind of, you know, money?
Picture is the vision for the front wall of the bay.
Okay, the bay has been very beneficial to us during our six-hour classes, which we all have college enrollment, so we all just sit out and help each other work and stuff. And the days when we don't have work, we use it to create posters for the football team or like any sporting event that's coming up, so it's very useful to help support our school.
This is the furniture that we usually use to make our posters, because it's very big. And it'd be really helpful to have something to match our school colors, because I think it'd just look better and be a better space to work in.
So much progress has been made already in the bay and the library, and it is inspiring to us as students. As a student council, we have put an emphasis on building a solid, fun culture to make students want to be in school. By investing in the culture inside BHS, we're hoping our spirit will expand beyond the walls of the high school and out into the community, in hopes of inspiring others to invest in our school. The library received a wall wrap that shows BHS highlights. We have not seen drastic renovations in the school in years, so seeing the major progress made just over the summer is very exciting and inspiring us students. We are dreaming big here at BHS, and just imagine how much more we can do if we have more resources. Building a culture where everyone feels a sense of belonging makes students want to be in school. Feeling pride for our school building builds a sense of community and will encourage educational attainment.
Hey Olivia, so how have the renovations in the bay and the school library improved your student environment?
Well, anytime I need a quiet place to work or just to get something done or to concentrate, I can go in the bay or the library and it's just a welcoming place and it's comfortable to hang out in.
Hey Mason, how have the progress and changes in BHS made you more excited for this year?
The changes have made me more excited because when they took out the lockers and put the bay in, it's like a place where you can like go out in the hall and work and not be in a lot of classrooms.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, that concludes our video. Again, we want to thank you so much for your time and all the support you have provided for the staff and students so far. Now we'd like to take this time to answer any questions you have, and then we also have samples, a few samples of the materials in the bay so far, if you guys would like to see those for reference. And another aspect that I'd like to point out is that in the bay so far, the paint, the green paint that was, has been there in the past, and just the bay area is now purple, and that has pleased a lot of students to see it match the color, our school colors, so I just wanted to highlight that.
That's been a 30-year question.
Yes.
Any questions or comments by board members?
Was the bay just an organic, kind of just, just name got used and stuff? Or was there like a competition to like come up with a name for it, or just kind of that's just what it was?
You know, I think, I mean, I think Ms. Hefner coined the term first, and then we were kind of just like, just, yeah, it stuck.
Did you all the Stuko have an essay in some of the renovations and what?
Yes, we, we had a couple meetings this past summer, and Ms. Hefner brought certain samples for us to kind of look at. And there's certain furniture layouts that she also had us look at, and we were able to sort of like, kind of come to a collective decision of which furniture do we think would seat the best, like most amount of students and what would be most comfortable for students to study in.
Do you know what the capacity will be ultimately when it's all said and done? For how many students can gather at one time comfortably?
So the north end, that will be the conference room, hopefully eventually will seat up to, I think, 18 to 24. And then the rest of the seating is really just how many kids can pile in, which knowing high school students, it'll be quite a few.
I will say in terms of going to the building walkthroughs, I never see that space empty. I always see someone out there working, to their point, studying, taking online classes, working in groups.
Mr. McCura takes his social studies classes out there frequently, and it's just something that, it's, the use of it is real, it's been cool to see.
Yeah, I also want to mention that, like you said, a lot of the teachers use the bay as well. Like, when we do group projects, like in years past, a lot of the groups would have to like work on the floor because there's only so much table space for everyone. So a lot of them have been able to go out to the bay and have a lot more room to work on.
That's a great point.
All right, so as this is a little bit of a spoiler for what's to come in the agenda, Mike Elliott has a piece of proposal that we will be providing to you tonight that hopefully will see this, this project itself move to the next, next step.
All right, also, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Executive Cabinet, you have represented your student body very well, we appreciate your professionalism. I'd like to give them a round of applause. All right, celebrating USD 348 Student Voices, that's an opportunity built into the agenda that if we receive letters or correspondence of any type, that is kind of a placeholder there to represent that. We did receive an email over the last week from actually a Baldwin High School alum who asked to not share too many details, but I wanted to make sure and point out for the record that we did receive that. And the context of the letter was the impact that was made upon that person, upon that student, even as a graduate now of one of our staff members, which transitions nicely to what we have next, which is the hashtag Baldwin Built Employee of the Month.
All right. Okay, so for this month's Baldwin Built Employee of the Month, this was a fun one to do because the timing of the student letter came in right when we were pulling in the nominations. So, I will start off, and because there's so much here that I wanted to tie in, I will be doing some reading, so I apologize upfront for doing that, but I didn't want to leave anything out. So our September Baldwin Built Employee of the Month has been a familiar face for our district and community for many years. They are described as helpful in understanding and just a good person. They are humble and hardworking, often willing to stay late to help students, even if it means sacrificing time as a coach. They develop relationships with students in ways that create lifelong connections that occur even after graduation. When a teacher creates a classroom atmosphere that becomes the meaning for why a student comes to school, graduates, and then chooses a path of study, that exemplifies the hashtag Baldwin Built. Please join me as we congratulate the Baldwin Built Employee of the Month for September, Mr. Tom Harmon. You bet. So, here's the deal, all right? I'm going to make you stand up here, I'll be a little bit awkward and-
I might let you hold on to this.
Okay, so we did receive a letter from a student. I called the student's family, and I called his mom, and he happened to be home for the weekend. And to this point, I did ask for permission, not only to call them out, but to also read some of the letter that I wanted, I didn't read it all, but I didn't write it all down, but I did provide some excerpts here, because Sam Darnell provided some comments here that could encapsulate what we try to accomplish as teachers. It says, "Mr. Harmon is not only an excellent teacher, but is also one of the most influential people in my life. He is one of the main reasons I have developed into the man I am today. Harmon is the direct cause of so many good things that have happened in my life. I am currently attending college at Pittsburgh State University. Mr. Harmon is the reason I decided to attend college. Harmon was my shop teacher for the entire time I was at Baldwin High School. He showed me the possibilities for a professional future in the trades. I left his program with direct experience in welding, woodworking, and small engine repair. In addition to his training, Mr. Harmon also took a group of students to Pittsburgh State Technology Center. This experience and exposure opened my mind to a career in the trades and continuing my education past high school. I can say with certainty that without Mr. Harmon's influence in my life, I would have not continued my education to push and better myself." The letter goes on to say, "My hope is that with this letter, that this reader or listener is able to capture just 1% of how truly a great of a man Tom Harmon is. I also hope that it is clear just how much he truly means to me. I view him as a truly great friend, teacher, mentor, and role model. All of these qualities that I elicit are the reason, I hope, when presented with good or bad situation later in my life, that I deal with and treat the situation just as Harmon would. This is why I believe everyone should agree that he is the best teacher to ever have taught at Baldwin School and deserving of being recognized for it." He also says, "P.S. Don't let Harmon know I said this awesome stuff, because he will tease me." To that end, like, Sam said a better name, but congratulations. And here's a copy of the whole, thank you. Please congratulate Tom.
Also for you, so part of our Employee of the Month program is co-sponsored by the Baldwin Education Foundation. And so this part is from them, and that is a cash stipend gift for you with many extra congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Congratulations.
All right, and with that, we will go ahead and proceed on to the fifth component of our recognitions tonight, which includes new employee introductions.
So we wanted to be able to provide an opportunity for you to be introduced to some of our new teachers, and with this being professional development day, we've had teachers here doing a lot of learning, and we had some that were able to be here tonight, so we wanted to take some time to introduce their names to you and then take a little bit of a recess to enjoy some meet and greet time. So at this point, I will ask our principals to come up and introduce those that could be here tonight. So Nicole, I'll start with you.
I will get us started with Megan Delatory, who came to us to teach first grade. We tried to snag Megan last year, but we're fortunate to get ahold of her this year on a second round of interviews, and she has just very effortlessly flowed into our staff, so we are super excited to have her with us this year. So, meet Megan.
Maybe it was the lone teacher.
If we would have been after today, we might have had another person to introduce, because we did finally hopefully fill our preschool positions, so it is on the agenda for approval tonight. So, all right, thanks Megan.
Welcome Megan.
Dan, I don't know if you had any of your teachers available to make it tonight, but you've got some names that you want to-
I want it on the record that I'm acknowledging them.
None of ours are here today, I do have quite a few, so joining our fifth grade team, we have Grace Duddy and Lauren Rowe, Grace was a student teacher last year, we were going to keep her and the building didn't let her get away. Lauren and both of those are first-year teachers. Mr. Cullen, very experienced PE teacher, joining our specials team, he came to us from Gardner. And then two additions to our special ed staff, Cece Sau, she is from the University of Alabama. And Robin McKeon, she was a longtime sub and has taken that position in third grade sped, so welcome to them if you're watching at home.
All right, I have the pleasures of introducing our junior high staff that are here, and if you're here, just go ahead and stand up when I call your name. Both Mr. Curry and Mr. Glenn weren't able to be here tonight for a couple of different reasons, but did want to make sure that we recognize their staff.
Joining us in life skills for grades six through eight is Barry Deardorff. Macy Hoskinson is our agriculture science, she is actually, we'll get actually a double introduction as the high school does there, she's-
Seven through 12, she's our agriculture education, soon-to-be ag science, FFA, pathway, expertise teacher there. We also have Sam Vasquez, he teaches social studies in eighth grade. We have Tracy, I'm going to get the name wrong, I know it, but I'm going to try, Savedra. Tracy Savedra, she is our core four, our student success teacher over at the junior high. Our special education social worker, Chelsea Schwindemann could not be here. And then we also have Bridges that is housed in the junior high, but it actually serves ages 18 to 21, and that's Ashley Taylor, so that is our junior high staff, so welcome to Baldwin Junior High. All right, Grant Kelly for the high school.
Kelly sits in this one house, she's already cried twice tonight. She's a little puppy in the eyes.
Not wanting to be in front of anybody, so. I'm used to it though, so. We have a lot of new staff between our building and co-op. Kaylee Tannahill is the new fax teacher. Allison Smith is high school math.
Sorry, can you say what fax is for people?
Family and consumer science, don't say home economics, I found out that that's very offensive these days. So, it is fax, family and consumer science. Renee Linky, biology. Jennifer Lewis is our new life skills teacher. Josh Reynolds is our transition coordinator. That's a person, part of the co-op that has a transition from, it's like our 18 to 21 program, but also gets them in touch with other services they might be able to get. Chelsea Schwindemann, sped social worker. John Cullen is a PE teacher for two hours in our building. Leslie Jessup is the ELA teacher, and that came to us shortly before school. Ashley Taylor is over at Bridges. Randy Dalton is gifted. Kylie Fisher, occupational therapist. And Levi Green, Micah Werner, and Tammy Johnson, all Paris. The one that I left off is Macy Hoskinson. I don't know if some of you had the opportunity to come to the-
I don't know if some of you had the opportunity to come to the open house, right? We had the open house last week. She had everything set up. I came in, you know, kind of like, I don't, like, overbearing, like, "What do you need? What do you need?" And in the nicest way possible, she finally just said, like, "Hey, I got it," and just, like, back up. So, I realized, she probably realized I knew nothing about FFA, I'm learning as we go, and she's like, "I got it." So, she told me that, and then so I did step back. So, she's been a phenomenal addition, and already making great relationships with our students, so we're excited.
Great, you're welcome. At this time, we will recess and have a reception out in the commons area here to welcome the new teachers, to congratulate our Employee of the Month, Mr. Harmon, and all the things that have happened during our recognitions time. You are all welcome to come out, introduce yourselves, and get to know our old guard and our new. It'll be a great opportunity. Meeting is at recess.
Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay. Then moving on to financial report FY 23-24 budget.
All right. So as Nate comes up to the podium here, and I've asked Clayton Kelly, who's here with Piper Sandler, to address some of the questions that come up. What we wanted to do is show you some of the answers to the questions that you had in terms of what the different mill rates would look like, the impact it would have on the budget itself, and then have Piper Sandler here to just kind of touch base on what that could, what impact that could have on a potential future bond issue on that front. Our intent tonight is to be able to ask the board for a budget approval. So in recognition of last Thursday's meeting, we want to make sure that we get the numbers in front of you that you'd asked for there, Dr. Harvey. So Megan, when you get a chance, can you get the numbers there posted on the projection? What we did is Nate put together a breakdown of what it could look like.
She didn't hear what he said.
The, we want the bond and interest calculations, what it could look like if the mill rates were 14.488, 13.488, 12.488, 11.488, and then compared to 11.250. As we get that press put up there, it is available to you in your board packet. It is also on the agenda within Board Docs. If the total to be collected levy, if it was 14.488, is a little over 2 million, at 2 million 5,399. If as a board you were to reduce the bond and interest mill by one mill to 13.488, the total to be levied would be 1,866,864 dollars or a decrease of 138,535 dollars. If the mill rate were to be set at 2.488, the total to be levied would be 1,728,535 or a decrease of 276,864 dollars. To drop the mills to 11.488, the total levy would be 1,590,103 dollars or a decrease of 415,296. And to drop the mills to 11 and 1/4, it would be 1,557,215 or a decrease of 448,184 dollars. The bond and interest payments that are there for fiscal '24, '24, '25 are equal to 2,530,69 dollars in '23, '24, and 2,539,181 dollars in '24, '25. Nate has also put into, on the presentation there at the bottom, Megan, would you mind spreading that out a little bit so it's easier to read or enlarging it for the audience? There you go. And then the cash reserves at the end of '23, '24 would be the following. After giving this some consideration of the weekend and thoughts, discussions with Nate, our initial amount suggested to you of 4.488 would put us in a position, doing so to fulfill the goals and the discussion that we put forth, that we hadn't stepped back from where we were with the bond issue. However, in talking with Nate, discussion that we had over the summer was what would it look like if we could provide some relief there within bond and interest? As Nate's done some digesting and looking into this, if we were looking to provide some relief within bond and interest, the recommendation that we would provide would be a 12.488 or a decrease of 276,864 from what we initially proposed. If there are, we've got again Clayton here to address any questions that you might have in terms of what impacts that could have within next spring with the bond election. If a bond election doesn't occur next spring, the final payment for some existing bonds that we have, their final payment would be in September of '24. Those associated mills would then be dropping off that funding square here.
Can we provide a quick summary as well? You did a great job of providing just a little bit more.
Just to provide the overall picture.
First page is really just a summary of the cash flows. The subsequent pages are more detail on those cash flows.
And again, just kind of been reviewing this with Mark and Nate over the past few weeks, and I would say just this really puts more into perspective and focuses more on kind of future cash flows with and without a bond issue.
So you get an idea of what is the impact of setting, you know, your mill levy this year if you continue to set at that moving forward, at those mills moving forward. So the summary here, as you'll notice, it really follows closely with those mills that you're seeing there in really showing, you know, if no future bond issue, if there wasn't one, there's no future projects, how early you'd be able to pay off your existing debt versus what it looks like with a potential new bond issue. And we've been showing two different structures on this, but really focusing on wrapping around existing debt services, I think the main point in what we've been looking at lately. So as you can see with the 14.488 mills as an example, if you were to keep it at that for the bond interest fund, your total capacity would be about $23 million on a future bond issue. So as an example, the 12.488 mills provides a $17,250,000 bond issue. So as you reduce that mill levy, the potential capacity for a new project at those mills moving forward is also reduced. We've provided status quo scenarios essentially if there is no bond issue on the first three or four pages of the packet, really detailing out again, highlighting that year where you'll have funds available to prepay all existing debt. And I think the tough situation about this and understanding, you know, what does a mill levy impacted a me for the future is your total debt service. So you're in a position where debt service drops off significantly after 2027. So because of that, if you look at status quo, what are minimum payments required to make, you know, it changes after 2027 because your total payment that you're paying drops off significantly. So as an example, we've shown a status quo scenario with each of these mills as shown on the projected screen, including the 11.25 mills. I know that was a specific question that got brought up. And that kind of follows in line with, you know, each of those, really every single, each of those mills, if no future project is needed, you'll have enough funds to be able to pay off existing debt in 2028. The only one that allows for a year ahead, a year sooner, is that 14.488. So 2027 is when you have enough funds available.
And you can see in each of those scenarios specifically with the, I'm looking at the 11.25 mills, that you actually are only making, you're making less than, generating less revenues than your required debt service payment because your fund balance in that scenario drops off through 2027. You don't really start generating any fund balance, additional fund balance, until your debt service payment drops off in 2028. So I know there's the question of, you know, what's the, what's that required mill levy need to be set at to really continually make debt service payments equal to what is due each year, and that's a little bit above that 11.25 mills. So that 11.488 is actually a really good example of.
So what is that number? Does the 11.488 represent the minimum to meet our obligations?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, so that would be, and you can view that when you look at.
That fund balance over time in that scenario with the 11.488.
It stays pretty, it drops a little bit, but stays pretty close to your existing fund balance now. And then obviously, when you drop it.
2028 on debt service.
You would need to drop mill levies to match. And we ran that scenario as well. So if you're wanting to just use the entire fund balance and not worry about prepaying early, that's that, I think it's the fifth page on here, status quo. It shows eight mills would be required, and that withdrawal on your existing fund balance. So you're really, you're generating a lot less revenues than your required payment because you're drawing on your existing fund balance in that fund to basically where you're depleting it. And then once your mill, once your total debt service drops off in 2028, you can drop it from eight mills to five mills.
And is that our existing fund balance, the bottom of your set of numbers?
Yes, looks like, yeah.
And based on the decision we'd make to match the number of the mills above, that is indicating what will be the change to our fund balance?
For next year, yep, at the end of '23, '24.
But if we went to the eight, it would deplete all of that?
For next fiscal year, it would drop it to one point, around 1.8 million.
No, I'm talking about over the series of the.
Yeah.
Of the bond obligations.
Yeah, it would, over time.
And the same number of mills, of course, we can't project what valuations or anything would be, but what would, does that look like as far as a bond project at that time? As far as what would the same mill projection with what we know, just using today's valuations as an example, what would that provide?
Yes, so great question. So if you look at your packet, the next page after that, six, eight mill to five mill drop is the first example. If you kept it at 14.488 mills, it generates about $23 million.
Now.
Correct.
Yeah, but I'm talking in 2028. So if we took the mill that we're at and.
Yep.
With that concept of waiting till then.
Yep.
What kind of dollar amount would that potentially?
We don't have, I don't, we don't have those scenarios ran. That timing of when that is needed will probably make a difference in our capacity. We're just focusing on, in this scenario, on a 2024 bond election, but yeah, we're happy to run those and give you an idea of if you, if you win 2028, you know, what is your additional capacity?
Mark, here's a question I have. Do, I know that we have the authority to decrease bond and interest mills.
Can we at any point in time vote to increase that? Or does, because it's kind of a special thing?
You have to be, your, your bond and interest mills have to generate enough funds to make your legal.
Okay, so my, so my fear would be, and that's kind of, it's kind of outside the realm of probability or possibility, but if assessed valuation's dropped, pretty low, you know, for whatever catastrophic reason that happened, and all of a sudden now our bond interest is not, because again, that's why it's all confusing, because we can't say we want this much money, we have to say, we have to translate that into mills.
And the reason why we have excess money is because valuations have gone up, the mills have stayed the same, so everyone, if we drop that and then valuations go down, again, not super likely to happen, but if, can we then say, well, actually, we need to go back up? Or is that something, because you know, you said that with an election.
You can do that, because you have to generate enough mills to make your legal obligation. There are some districts that will increase their mills so they can be aggressive and pay down early, and they can do that. There's a scenario that was going through my mind, and I've lost it here, so if I, it comes back to me and it comes out of the blue, I promise it's related to that. I was just gonna, I'm making sure I understood what you said, the last part. Can you raise in the future just to meet the obligation earlier? You, yes, that is one of the strategies. When, when we reached out to one of our attorneys, that we'd say we reached out to four, it would have been our bond attorneys, what's the, what's the name of, Gilmore and Bell. We reached out to Gilmore and Bell, and they said, they said that there's one strategy that's even out there, is some districts will raise their bond and interest so that they can get aggressive and pay down debt early. So in theory, if we reduce, then next year, the board could choose to bring it right back to where it was in order to reduce that earlier. That is the strategy, yes.
Yeah, and going to your point about dropping assessed valuation and the concern that that's why you guys are in such a great position from a fund balance standpoint, having that flexibility in case that does happen, so that it doesn't necessarily maybe require a mill levy increase that next year, maybe you can draw on that fund balance, absorb some of that loss in your assessed valuation. And so that, that kind of goes towards just overall financing plan and the importance of having, you know, a fund, a fund, a fund balance to be able to absorb any of those type of changes.
And I think right now, something that's, that's been discussed at the legislative level that I've heard is something that is more of a cap at the amount that a county could raise, increase in assessment. I've heard is that there's talk of 4%. So if they were to come to a 4% cap in terms of your evaluation of your home, want to make sure that what we are generating, right now, we have the capacity to sustain it. Sustain it. If we reduce too far, that could potentially be a problem. But again, no one has a crystal ball. So we're not the only school of history we need to work with.
Yep.
Comparatively with others that might be in a similar situation as this, what, how do you advise, I mean, do you guys have, I mean, recommendations based on the situation?
No, so, good question. Our role really is to focus more on just providing the different scenarios that you're looking at. So maybe it's good, maybe take a step back and kind of how we see things. If you're looking at potential projects, having an idea of what those amounts are, we just really want to provide future cash flows. What is that bond and interest mill levy fund look compared on those different projects? And really letting you guys evaluate after seeing all the data, you know, what's the best course of action to move forward. I will say that a lot of, you guys are in a pretty good position when it comes from what we see compared to other districts of you have bonds falling off soon, you have a cash balance. The other benefit of the cash balance is if you're looking at a new project, you can pay principal off sooner, which lowers your overall interest costs on a new bond issue, maybe draw down a little bit on that fund balance. If, it really comes to a decision at this point is if there, if you have an idea of a new project moving forward, there's, you know, several different options to look at. If there is no future project that you're looking at, that really changes your financial plan and where you're looking at setting the mill levy before, because then you're focusing on how do we get it to where we lessen our overall interest costs, pay it off early, lower our overall bond and interest. Whereas if you're focused more on, okay, we have this need, this want that the district wants to do, how do we have a financial plan set to where it results in the lowest overall interest cost for the district? That's kind of where we come in, and, you know, really our role, I would just say, is providing those options, letting you see what those options look like, and then throughout the bond election process, we'll help with that, provide bond proceeds. So there's, if a subsequent election is successful, we'll help with securing the final interest rate for that, as well as reinvestment of future construction dollars with where interest rates are right now. There's significant earnings and potential earnings available on investment projects. And then in the meantime, kind of just like what we're doing now, help with budgeting, looking at different mill levy options from the cash flow analysis. So it's kind of an ongoing discussion of the financial plan of the district and considering all your options, I mean, you're, you're kind of in a spot where you're like, okay, if we do have a project that we want to continue to try to push forward and report with, we're in a pretty good spot to have a solid financial plan to do that at fairly low overall interest cost. I'd say the biggest thing that we tell districts right now is construction inflation. I'd say the biggest thing that we tell districts right now is construction inflation and having to wait to do that project in the future. The cost of doing that project, even though we're at interest rates that are higher than where we were two years ago, over the past 35 or 40 years, still lower about, I would say, interest rates have been higher about 70 to 75% of the time than where they are today over that period. So because of that, because you have short-term investment earnings, really your biggest cost becomes waiting to do that project and the cost of that project potentially going up 15, 20%, you know, over a couple of years. So, um, yeah, there's a, a lot of factors in this, and it just takes a lot of different discussions. And I think that's why we're here, is more of to let you guys bounce ideas off of what seems like the right plan and us just provide that information to you.
You know it's on a piece of paper somewhere, but do we have the current interest rates of our existing bonds somewhere? Or maybe someone's got that in the van?
I actually do, yeah, I brought that with me.
So, go ahead.
Because then we can repackaged, refinance, collated them or something at some point, it goes back to.
And that's a good point. That's a question we get on this process is like, should we wait till interest rates that they.
Object them to drop back to where they were two years ago. Should we wait to finance them and lock interest rates in there? It's like, luckily with a new bond issuance, it comes with anywhere from typically a seven-year to 10-year
repayment ability, so after seven or 10 years, you can refinance at no penalty and lock in that lower rate. But to your question about existing bonds, so your 2012 bond issue, current outstanding rates on that, it is the highest outstanding rate. So it's a little bit different than a mortgage. Each, each year, each maturity is going to have a different interest rate, is 2.15%. Your 2015 bonds, which was a refinancing, has the, you can have, have the ability to refinance that in 2025. So that was a 10-year call date on that issue. The highest interest rate right now on that is 4%. The 2016 bonds mature next year, the highest interest rate on that is 2%. The 2020 bonds mature in 2027, the highest interest rate on that is 1.7. Actually, every interest rate on that is 1.7. So really, the next opportunity, I would say, with current rates right now, you're not going to be refinancing with savings with any of those. But 2015 is probably the series 2015 bonds with 4% rate, potentially your next option, but.
Like it might creep down to that level where refinancing makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, we can hope, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah, but that would be the one that would make the most sense for potential refinancing.
So it means wrap options, is that refinancing those bonds?
Uh, so that is not including any refinancing. That is only including structuring the new debt service to basically amortize less principal in the early years.
Got it. So does the, does this illustration up here take into consideration when you already made our large bond and interest payment for this year?
Your figures there, Nate, did you, does that include the payment we made on September 1st? Is there having part of it paid?
The overall 23, 24 budget is on four.
Okay.
Or, see, 23, 24 budget, that I have to give an example to know. But we have paid the initial payment, which is already taken out of that number.
But yeah, so the cash reflection will be after 23, 24 year, that's without.
Well, what I'm asking is, are we going to be adding to that before we owe another one?
No, so that should be as of like June 30th, the fiscal year 23, 24 BNI payment. The cash reserves at the end of fiscal year 2023, 24 will be as.
Of July 1st of 2024.
So I see to your question that the paint, the, the final five series of numbers takes into consideration that the payment was made, and that's the leftover.
Correct.
So then we will get the funding from this cycle that we're getting ready to vote on or that we're getting ready to take, added to that before the next funding would be due?
Correct, it should include the addition of that, yes. Because you will receive the tax collections in December and by May of next year. So you'll have it before this July 1st, 2024 cash balance.
Other questions, session?
Well, I know it's not till later in our agenda, but I know we're, uh, somewhere on here about reconvening the bond subcommittee at some point here soon. I mean, I think we're, we're, we'd be wise to wait until the board is seated for like full-on discussions about the bottom look like. Each of these on the projection here, it looks like if we took their original bottom from last time around and did not pass, there are pieces of that we could probably pull back out for and accomplish some of these, these different options that we have here. So, and so, you know, the 13.48 and below all have approximately the same pay-off date for our current existing debt there in 2028. So it puts us on a pretty good track right there for getting that accomplished, but. And, but that's, I don't think that limits us too much from seeking future bonds.
All the, all the decisions of determining what the mils would be now would just give some direction then for the subcommittee to start having conversations around a, a known number.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, I think it comes back to what we dealt with last time, whether you go rate neutral, or whether the project has to include additional mils.
Right.
Well, I mean, you could, I mean, the, those of us that are going to be on the board, the new members too, just, hey, we're going to raise bond and interest back up to where it was. You know, even if, even if you did it for the short term, you know, make this a year-to-year decision to, you know.
I think we could use the advanced payments.
Right.
But, oh, go ahead. I was saying, complication, do, like, do we have to, like, say, for that $2.5 million that, for bond interest payments annually, do we have to take in that much annually in tax collection since we already have a bank of?
So making sure that I am clear in my head. To Phil's point he just made, that regardless of what, I mean, if we were to make a change to any one of those numbers from where we are sitting, if next year's board wanted to go in a different direction to get to this 2027 year payoff or, or, you know, they, they could go back up to that number.
Provided that they're.
As long as it's going to fund existing debt or a new project.
New, if it's, if it is, I want to make sure I say this right, so I'm right here. You can, you can raise the mils, so as long as you're meeting your obligation or addressing current debt. If it is something new, that's where it has to go to an election. Does that make sense?
Well, theoretically, just to get, wrap your head around the whole process. And you use the term, meaning your obligation, your debt service obligation. If, I mean, could you then theoretically drop the bond interest to zero this year? Since you'll have nothing there to make payments next year, and then the next year bump it back up to 14? I mean, I mean, not that.
In theory, you could, but I don't think that's a, a strategy I'd recommend.
No, I agree 100%. I just, I just begin just trying to kind of see it from all different sides. So you could, as long as you have enough money in there, let's, let's say we have an oil billionaire that bequeathed us a huge sum of money, right?
Great.
You can drop that down, and you can, you don't, and you don't have to, you're not required to take that much in tax every year.
That's my understanding.
As long as there's money in that fund, you can.
Exactly, all available resources, so including any taxes you levy or your existing fund balance.
And if I am looking at this paperwork right, eight is really what's required to carry us to maturity on all of our existing debt. But we would completely delete every reserve that we would have. So we would end up with.
Exactly right.
Yep.
And that's not paying it off early, that's just paying it off as they're due.
Correct.
If, I mean, at 2%, it doesn't make sense to really pay this off early. It's inflation right now, you're making money by not paying it off.
Does raising the mils happen only once a year? Like, is there a protocol for that that we, because I've only ever addressed?
It's when the setting of the budget and if you also to republish, if, if you need to. There, there are times where a district is, they need to republish to be able to spend more. But I don't necessarily know that that has to do with raising the mils during the course of the school year. That just has more to do with the fact that your enrollment brought in more, more.
At some point, you're going to be able to collect it because it has to turn into.
And paid.
Yeah, so that, I mean, the, the county handles all that, and they'll handle it. This is the. The city, you know, other taxing entities, and so it's all at one time.
This is the one time to set the mils.
That's what, yeah, so if we did decide, okay, we're going to drop, and then maybe discuss raising after the new board, then you can only do that basically one time a year.
Right. Republishing of the budget later on has more to do with, you guessed, low in terms of your enrollment numbers and you wind up with more.
So it becomes a discussion of philosophical approaches, right? It becomes, you know, it's important to understand how far could you take it? That is a debt servicing model compared to, and if I say the wrong word, correct me, compared to an investment strategy, really. And is there middle ground to be found? Because if we were hypothetically, if we were to go all the way to 8. whatever to just deal with what's already there, and I know there are some who would say, yeah, do that. But in what world, because of any new project, you have to then go to election? You can't just raise it here. So if a new project was going to require, let's say, 15, going and asking the public for seven will, will be a hard thing to ever, ever get a project done. Do you have that graph showing overall mill levy history, Megan? Because I think that's part of, I think we're all trying to find some, some middle, yeah. Oh, good, you have it there. I don't know if they have it though, so.
So the existing, existing funding, but again, it's still.
Yeah.
So existing fund in there that's not going towards debt service can certainly go to a new project if a bond gets passed. You can't just take that and start spending on other stuff. You have to have a bond get passed, right?
Yeah, so essentially.
But you, you don't have, that, that money gets taxed under that bond at 14.488. That stays in that bond and interest, you can use it for that, or you can use it against a future project. Correct.
And I'm not identifying what's right or what's wrong. I'm just stating, here, here, here are the facts of overall mill levy history. And once you give mils, you know, it's really hard to get them back, which is why districts oftentimes don't release them. That's why every district around us is passing bonds and we didn't. So I don't think, you know, I think it's important to keep that in mind. I like definitely coming off, me personally, I definitely like coming off of the 14.488 because, you know, I don't know that I'm comfortable with the bare minimum either, because I do think that handcuffs, because the bottom line is, we're going to have to build things. The district is going to need investment into our infrastructure. And part of our job is, like it or not, to protect that too. But I also know we're looking to provide some relief in a time that the realities of inflation, the realities of all the things that have been mentioned that we have spent a lot of time in earnest listening to. I think there's a real desire here to try to find something that is as responsible as possible to both ends. That's what I'm hearing from the tenor of the discussion here, which can continue. Tony, you haven't said anything.
Yeah, so Mr. Dodge, you, you, you mentioned that the 12.488 level might be palatable. Did I hear that correctly?
That was the number that Nate and I, through discussion, that if there's a desire to come down from 14.8 to 488, that would be the number that we would recommend.
Okay.
Not, not going, not going further than 12.48.
276,000, 277,000, close to that.
Right.
Reduction, tax collection.
Right.
In mil speak, that's two mils.
Right.
Yeah, until, until the next phrase comes out.
Right, right, that's what it means today.
Well, because I agree with Kelly, the, the need for future projects and bonding those out is not going to go away. And so for those of you who are, who are staying on the board, I'm a bit concerned about protecting you all, because we saw what happens when you have a bond issue up for vote, and you have to ask for additional mils. It is, it is a, it is a tough sell.
And, and the flip side of that, Tony, in my eyes anyways, like, there's honesty in saying this project is going to cost seven mils or whatever it is, and just like, that's what you're asking for, right? And, and so I know it, it's not a common tactic, the approach we're taking here to say, to reduce a mill levy here, but it's, or at least the bond interest is this way. But, but there's a lack of clarity and transparency when around like, this is, this project's going to cost $20 million. Is, that translates over into six mils or whatever it might be, right?
Which is what they're going to experience if we wait until 2028.
Right, right.
Because the entire project's going to be.
Well, you're going to, and you're going to add more projects, you're going to have more needs.
So I, I know this was in our packets last week. Was it on the slide that?
Yeah, it was in the packet that everybody.
Yeah, okay. And, have you seen this? So it, because I think, I don't think you guys designed this. I think it was designed by void builders. But we, we'd asked about the potential future. Nobody has a crystal ball, but they just added inflation factors, you know, 4% through 8% since that's what we've been experiencing, or kind of similar to what the country's been experiencing. And I guess I just think that's important, usually for the, the board to take into consideration.
Construction costs, offsetting of saving 3 million now versus costing more twice that later. That's part of it too.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think that's a great point. You know, it's what we've seen with districts that we've, I'm talking to districts that have failed projects, failed bond elections and come back two or three times, what the cost of those same projects are five years later.
You know, it's, it's just a reality of, of what you're dealing with. And Phil, I think you made a good point, just look at short-term investment earnings right now and what you're able to generate in investment earnings on short-term interest rates, short-term investment earnings. So, I don't know, that, having that fund balance that you do have just provides so much flexibility when it comes to either a new project or really your, what your options are moving forward. And being able to reduce the overall interest cost, because like I said, we can focus on interest rates and where they're at in potential fund balance, but the reality is, is the biggest cost that we're seeing is construction inflation, to your point.
And I'm really, I'm really worried about that in a way that, I mean, hey, the easiest thing for me to do. I go off in January, slash and dash, and, and, but I also feel a loyalty to be responsive to the needs that we are all feeling and getting squeezed on, but also protecting the future board's opportunity to leverage these opportunities, because we are going to have to build things. The students are going to need things, they need things now. That's not going to go anywhere, and I don't want to handcuff people. So that's why I'm personally looking for kind of some middle ground.
Well, I think that's what Mr. Dodge just broke out.
Yeah.
So one more question, sorry.
You're fine.
On this, on this graph here with the changing these mils and the future impact, is that assuming a permanent change?
Correct.
Because that's, that's, this is a permanent change in these numbers versus a one-year change. If, if, if the, if the board next year, I mean, if they did go forward with the project and they changed this back to the 14.88, then that's going to change these numbers dramatically.
Correct, yes, and that essentially assumes.
Which is good news, I think, for the future board.
It is, but going back to what you would have to ask voters at that time is you're asking for a mill levy increase. So that summary is showing what the no-mill levy increase ask would be at that time.
Depending on the timing of it, that's assuming you go forward immediately, you know.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, versus three years from now?
Well, no, or in the fall versus the spring.
Yeah, so in the fall, yeah, we could, if you were to set it.
If you were on the November cycle, you would be making this decision prior to that November decision.
Right. So the, the 12.48 mils.
So the, the 12.48 mills, what total, what total mill does that put us at if we, if you follow that?
Yeah, I'll put it in there in one second.
About 52, I think.
It would be 52.
Point 661?
Six.
No.
Yeah, 52.661.
Yeah.
Versus the initial overall of 54.661 because it's exactly a two.
Which totally approved last year, I'm sorry, that 54-ish, so it approved last year in our original budget meeting last September.
Yeah, let's do my eye check.
Yeah, 54.909.
That was 21.22. It was 49 because.
45 should go.
Both of the both.
But at the, what we, oh, what we actually approved was.
54.4.
54.909 was what we voted to approve last year prior to the, the mill reduction that was adjusted to 49.568 because of the suit. Yeah.
This, this proposal, that 12.48 or whatever it was, okay.
Yeah.
That, that would be a mill reduction from, actually, from any time besides the vote.
So last year prior to voting, we made some adjustments in our budget to remain, not, to remain at the same mill level and then vote and change that. This year, we actually reduced it slightly off of that, going back, and now we're considering reducing it to, and I guess that's where my, that's how I'm viewing it, just very simply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I as well. Other discussion or questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had, we've heard, you know, lots and lots about, you know, we just be worried about more about the use, not wants. I mean, it drives me nuts because like the things that we need are things that we need. And if you're not in the school every day or going to school activities and that kind of stuff, a lot of those needs seem like they would just be wants, but they're really needs. You know, I mean, like the other night, what, Thursday night at the high school?
Yeah.
You know, there's, like, the people were getting pissed because there's no parking anywhere. It's like, there's a, there's a, there's a team football dinner, soccer game, volleyball games.
Musical.
Musical, yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, it's like, there's, you know, people zooming through the parking lot super fast trying to get to a spot, you know, almost hitting people and it's, it's not a want, you know, nobody really wants a new parking lot. I mean, you, you need, I mean, those are things that, that, I mean, that, that we really do need and so.
We need more parking downtown.
That's true.
Where are we going to get that?
The wrong board.
Sorry.
Yeah. What else, board members?
I guess I'll maybe share my just summarizing thoughts and that is that it's, it's a balance, it's a balancing mindset that I'm trying to have with myself, self-talk, because if it was a personal decision, I want the needs and to position ourselves from that, but I also feel like we need to be considerate of some of the voices that we've heard from and they're part of our community that we represent. So I'm, I'm willing to compromise personally to Mr. Dodge's recommendation.
Susan, where are you at?
I, I am, if Mr. Dodge and Mr. Oler have, have said that they can continue to make things work at that lower mills, I'm willing to go that way if that's, if that's doable for the district.
Tony?
I'm in agreement. I was, I was ready to come in here and argue for the 14th, but I am persuaded that none of us want to pay taxes. We all want some tax relief and I get that, right? What I'm concerned about is that there are going to be needs in the future and I, I know from prior experience, trying to do a bond and trying to get people to pay more money for that is a tough sell. And so it's making that more difficult if we decide to take this action. But I, but I'm hearing patrons who want some tax relief, this go around. The fact is, is that there's never a good time to raise taxes, ever, right? During, during tight times like now, people don't want to pay their taxes. During flush times, they want their, their money back from us, right? And so taxes are just, you know, one of those tough issues that regardless of what we do, there's going to be, there's, it is this balancing act, right? Do we, do we provide tax relief, which I understand is something that people want? I want it in my household, too. But I also want good schools in Baldwin City and I want the parking lot to be bigger so that when we have multiple events, people can have places to park. And so I feel like we are, I feel like we're taking a reasonable action here, not dropping it to the floor, not dropping taxes to a bare minimum, but shaving them back a little bit. But boy, I feel for future boards because getting that back is going to be tough.
Chris?
I think the future board's going to have to work, you know, like whatever that new bond looks like. And I think it's, it feels certain that we're going to put that projection out there for the next two, three years because again, we have needs that have to be addressed at that point. And that future board, if we take this action, right, we just have to work the tails off to get that, get that articulated and quite rather why, of why this, these needs are, have to be addressed at the time, but I think that's a fight that the board's got to take on in the future. So some of you guys get to avoid that, but. Well, we'll keep, keep kind of.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I'm, I'm going to earmark the date of this meeting, so when we ask a member, a few, two years later, when we ask a member of bond, I'll be like, I go back and look at meetings and we said, we're going to have to do this at some point in time, but yeah, I'm fine with 12.48.
Okay. I am, as I've said the other night, I'm, I'm conflicted for all the reasons I already mentioned, I don't want to be repetitive. I, I think it's the right thing to do. I think this is the right course of action. I continue to be troubled, though I completely understand it, I continue to be troubled that essentially at the most local level where your tax dollar has the most impact, that's where we're being asked to offset people's property taxes rather than, so we're trimming two mills here and there was a lovely genteel lady sitting on the front row the other night that I remember saying, you know, you guys aren't helping me, you never have. And there, there it is, every year. I know that mill speak is different, but mill speak is the lever that districts have and where your tax dollar makes the most difference as far as educating our kids. I'm going to be honest, it, it troubles me. I feel like we're chasing a symptom here rather than pursuing a cure. If we did not have to pay, that's essentially equivalent roughly to three mills for the difference between special education, well, there's our two mills right there and then some. But it is what it is and I agree with Andy Parks who said this very eloquently the other night and could not be here tonight. I, I hope that the advocacy that's taking place continues beyond the most local level because this is the level where it actually impacts our kids the most. So though I am conflicted, I also appreciate the spirit of compromise and that's what I've always appreciated about this board. So thank you. With that, it seems as though, I don't want to, in discussion prematurely, unless anyone has anything else they would like to add, what would be appropriate at this time would be to go ahead and have a motion.
Do you have a resolution?
And we have that.
For LOB first or do you have a resolution for?
Yeah.
Leave the LOB.
Yeah, let's do the.
Do the LOB.
Yeah. Do the LOB resolution and then that way when we have the full motion, we would then have the reference of the LOB, the vote, prior vote exceeding the revenue neutral rate and also the needs assessment that was completed as statutorily required in August. All of those components would need to be reflected in the final motion unless somebody has a different understanding. So in my mind, the LOB resolution would need to come first. Does anyone see that differently?
For the LOB resolution itself is required because we are exceeding the state average of 31.6 at a level of 31.72%.
Do we need to read that?
Yeah, let's, let's have that read as part of the motion.
Yeah, I can do it. Okay.
Try that again.
Yeah, I'll read it. I move that USD 348 Board of Education shall be authorized to make a local option percentage in an amount of 31.72% for FY 2324 as required in the resolution.
The certification information is referenced underneath on this date, District 348 in Douglas County, Kansas, on the 18th day of September the 20th, 2023.
September 18th.
Excuse me, September 18th, September 2023, God had it myself. Thank you for the correction.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded, sorry, to approve the LOB rate at 31.72% as stated in the resolution that has been read aloud. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. And now we would go on to adopting the budget in its entirety.
Would this change?
I'm sorry.
Your motion would note the reduction to 12.488 mills in bond and interest as well as identifying that the budget was developed along with the needs assessment that the board approved in August.
In board docs, I put a sample for you.
I'm going to take a stab in front of the.
We also need to reference that, that, that this budget is based upon the LOB resolution we just passed, that we voted 7-0 to exceed the revenue neutral rate on 9/14, also based on the needs assessment that was passed unanimously in August of 23 and the LOB number and then the revised bond and interest number from 14.488 to 12.488 with a total mill amount between general funds, supplemental capital outlay, bond and interest to at 52.661 versus where it was, which was 54.661. I know, there are a lot of pieces.
So you mentioned R and R of the LOB needs assessment, the decrease rate in bond and interest and overall mill levy rate.
Correct.
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll give it the, I'll see if we get it. So I make, I make a motion to approve the budget as presented, given the approval of the needs assessment, the excess voting or the vote to exceed the excess or to exceed the revenue neutral rate, the previously approved LOB and the presented reduction of two mills from bond and interest for an overall mill levy of 52.661.
You get it?
Did you bring the needs assessment?
Yeah.
Totally.
Totally. All right, I'll second that. It was well done.
Thanks. Run it all down, it's easy.
All right, Phil has moved and Tony has seconded to approve the budget as presented with the reduction in bond and interest from 14.488 to 12.488, all other levels I've previously presented staying the same. Phil noted the needs assessment that was approved in August of 2023 that the budget was built upon, the vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate, 7-0 on 9/14, and tonight's LOB resolution establishing that at 31.72% with an ultimate overall mill levy number at 52.661. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, high school renovation project.
All right, Mike Elliott, as you have heard earlier from tonight's presentation, has been working with Kelly Efnor and the Student Council Executive Committee, and tonight he's got a presentation to you with an ask to help purchase or to purchase the high school renovation project from the bay.
Kids did a great job. They said everything I needed to say.
It's ditto.
Yeah, ditto. The one thing that wasn't covered in their presentation that I had in what I sent you guys on Sunday was the electrical upgrades we were going to do to the, to the bay, which includes charging stations, outlets on each pillar, some outlets and, and data for audiovisual components and then plus the furniture. Do you guys have any questions on what we're doing or?
My only question is, I mean, I, obviously I was in there when you were taking the lockers out and I, I think it's just amazing what's taking place and your, what your team has done and obvious, just.
Not even being stupid, walking through there and feeling the difference and feel of the school is, is powerful. But I also heard the overall plan from, from Kelly and from yourself and I just want to make sure that what we do or that we can support the whole, not just phase three tonight that you are presenting to us, that the phase four part of it.
Right, the, the conference room area, yes. We will be doing, we'll be touching on that either this spring or in the next fiscal year after July. We've got monies in capital outlay earmarked for that and then some other monies from, from interest.
Yeah, so, so out of our, out of our initial budget, we set for the locker bay with this state, next stage, which includes furniture and the electric. That maxes out our budget. We do, we have the feasibility to, to potentially finish that conference room in spring, but we would like to wait to see how capital outlay pans out. We've set aside some funds, but also this gives us an opportunity to potentially move forward in the spring so we can actually do construction within the summertime, so while the kids are at school.
That, that's our goal is to have it done over the summer.
But we did, we did set aside about 35,000.
It is a priority to get this wrapped up. If we have the ability to do it sooner, I think that is the desire of, of.
Right.
I know it is for Kelly and the students, so.
What, what I saw in this, I didn't think the students would be utilizing it as much as they are. And when we do get the furniture in there, we'll be adding, I just had it written down. I think it's a total of 61 seats. down, I think it's a total of 61 seats in that bay. So, or 51. So essentially two classrooms. And that's not including the soft area portion of the seating.
Would that space potentially, I'm just asking a question, be appropriate or big enough to hold these meetings in the future?
If we rearranged it.
I mean, it's really cool.
I gotta see it.
Yeah.
If possible.
Yeah, sure.
Or the library. Yeah, I mean, because.
Some beanbag chairs.
Yeah.
I want to get them on those post-it balls to sit on.
So Mike, this figure that you've got in your document here, this $29,835, that's just for furniture?
Yes, yes, that's for all the furniture that we've got. That includes not conference tables, but conference furniture that'll be modular, and then the soft seating, and then some barista-type tables and chairs.
So basically what they showed in their, this is for what was on their poster board?
Yes. Yes.
And do you have an idea, an estimate of what the electrical work might?
The electrical will be about $12,085.
And does that just put more outlets?
That's outlets, that's running it into and adding circuits. So we'll be adding circuits. And it'll be from, that figure is from Cole Creek or electrician.
Because, so that area is pretty wide open. Where are all the outlets going to be? Because I, that's where I'm thinking, like being in an airport and everybody's charging their phones, that's where everybody winds up sitting. Pretty wide open. Are they going to be in the floor? Are they going to be just in the wall area?
No, we're going to come through the ceiling and then down the pillars.
Okay.
And then we'll have like a barista table at every pillar with some charging stations and outlets there. And then on the north and south walls, there'll be, I can't remember exactly how many, but we'll have enough.
Double it.
Yes.
Six or eight drops altogether.
Yes.
The difference is double it.
So total, if you add that 12,000 in, we're looking at about 42,000?
Yes, 41,920, 34.
And you, and what did you say? It was capital outlay devoted to this or $35,000?
Yes, yes. This, yeah, this is all capital outlay. Yeah, it was originally a $60,000 project. We made, we made 2,300 selling the lockers. We had another 18,000 for the flooring, and then this 42,000 for the electrical and the furniture.
So is there, on the electrical part of it, is there any savings for doing the conference room or whatever, your multipurpose room all at the same time? Any implications because of that?
No, that is being done with this. Well, that's everything that we need to do electrical-wise in that space.
Are you doing the electrical with the furniture or with the multipurpose room?
No, we're going to do the electrical with the furniture. Yeah. Like I said in my little report, the furniture came before the conference room because I saw how much the students was using it. So I figured, you know, we can put the glasses or the glass walls and stuff off till this spring or end of summer.
And Mike, this came up last meeting we were here about using local contractors.
Yes.
Sorry if I remind you, but Cole Creek is a local contractor as well.
Yes, yes. Yep. Yeah, Brandon Gordon is one of the owners. He's, lives in the district, has kids in the district.
You graduate here?
Yes. Yep.
Looks good.
Do you have a motion or anything? I make a motion that we approve the Space 3 of the Bay project as presented.
For the furniture and all that.
If that needs to be in there.
Kelly has moved and Chris has seconded to approve the renovation, high school renovation project as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Vehicle bid.
Kelly, so they're doing backflip.
I do want to say something just really quick along those lines. As there, and those who are at the MDSS conference this last week know this also, there's a really high effect size on student-to-student collaboration. And I think that this gives them so much more opportunity to really collaborate and actually somewhat to each other, if that's a word I'm using kind of flexibly there. But there's just a high effect size on learning and achievement. So I think it's just a win all the way around.
Absolutely.
Well, and I'll speak to the fact that my girls have been playing AAU basketball for several summers, and I find myself in other school gyms across the country during the summertime when there's no kids. And we can, as parents, kind of wander around in between games and kill time while the kids are all sitting and hanging out together. And all the new schools I've been in have these collaboration, open spaces. And most of the older schools have done renovations similar to ours to make sure they do as well. So I'm glad that we are providing that. I think that's very neat. I guess I'd also ask Mike, and you already said waiting until next spring, but we do have a nice holiday break as well. What, I guess, what are we going to have in the springtime other than possibly increase cost to not go ahead and move forward with the rest of the project? I'm just asking. Is there something that's advantageous about waiting till spring? Are we going to have a fundraiser or should we just be looking at doing this now?
We can, we can look into it. We're just kind of making sure capital outlay money's good for spring. Make sure nothing breaks. I want to get it done too. I'm excited to see it. See the vision coming alive, especially with all the green.
Amen.
That came up at District Site Council tonight, and that has been a 30-year question from what I'm gathering, so.
Well, it's very à la Saved by the Bell 90s. I mean, it's very specific, but more purple is always good.
Yeah, the first time I took a tour through that building, I'm like, what is, what is this? You got green and you got blue, and there's no purple in that building except for the full colors. So that was one of the first things I thought about to walk in.
Progress, little bit at a time. All right, vehicle bid.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So as you recall from last year, we lost two vehicles. When, beginning of the fiscal year 2223, we actually had a transit van that we had in comp from a previous approval. Long story short, with COVID, that's supply and demand, they basically said sorry, and we canceled that. So we've been, we've been looking at this for about a year, year and a half. So we finally got to the point where we need to do something. So we've initially looked at like vehicle sizes of like Chevy Traverses, things of those nature. We settled on more of a like a Chevy Trailblazer type vehicle. Back in early August, we reached through the Green Bush, excuse me, Green Bush Consortium. They have two opportunities for vendors that we could not have to do the formal bid process, but they gave us some quotes. So I reached out to the first one, which was Phil Long Ford. They're based out of Colorado. Gave them my specs of what we were looking for. They didn't have anything that would specifically match. They did quote us back a '24 Ford Expedition at a quote price of $58,778. We also did reach out to vendor Malloy Fleet. They're actually based out of New Mexico. They were actually in the process of ordering the same vehicle specs to 2024 Chevy Trailblazer this month. Our initial thought was we would go with them. The one thing that I kind of held back on, it has a lead time, minimum three to six months to order, hopefully get it early, but it could be a bus situation. So we decided to hold off from last month's board meeting. We went ahead and did formal bids for local vendors. It was a long shot. I called, talked to a few dealerships. They kind of laughed at me a little bit because they're hitting the floor, they're off. They're hitting the lot and they're gone. The bids did come in this morning. We did not have any bid submissions. So I'm assuming that is due to the fact that they just didn't have a thing. Part of the bid requirement is that they have it on the lot ready to go. If board approved, we pick it up and be done. It was a gamble that I wanted to take the time to try to get by, bypass that lead time. So in the board docs as presented there, we have again the Phil Long Ford, which again, not really the vehicle type or size or amount of money we wanted to spend. But for the 2000 Chevy Trailblazer, for a single vehicle, the quote came in at $24,656. We were actually looking at only one vehicle, but with the cost savings of this particular vehicle, we'd like to actually look at purchasing two to replace both vehicles that we lost last year. So this evening, we're looking to seek potential approval for purchasing of two vehicles from Malloy Fleet for $24,656 times two, so a total of $49,312. Our budget in capital outlay was 110,000. So this actually leaves us about a little bit over about $60,700. With those funds, we were going to possibly add a truck for Mike's fleet to add a snowplow. We currently, we have a Suburban that we would like to shift our custodial, head of custodial there, and get him out of that. It's a very older vehicle. That's our hopes. So we haven't bid that out yet or got quotes yet for that.
So as Nate talked about, what allows us to deliver to Green Bush because they utilize the state contract being, so this vehicle has already gone through a state bid process. And so it allows you to purchase directly through that mechanism. I have talked to our big superintendents at a recent meeting in terms of purchasing vehicles. They're doing and going through the same process. They said, they seek bids, nothing's available. They get nothing back.
They're just, just not happening. And so there's another superintendent who's purchasing a vehicle actually from the same, from the same fleet, a different vehicle type, because this is, this is what we got. This is what we have.
Green Bush has spoken very highly of it, but Malloy as well. I did confirm that the price that the board chooses to move forward is locked, so there's no issue there. The price doesn't.
Includes shipping. So that's door-to-door, that's final price.
And I will tell you.
That's with shipping, yep.
I will tell you that I've got a number of teachers that will go to a workshop and conferences and they'll choose to take their own vehicle because driving a transit van when they're just taking two or three people is a bit much. And driving the transit van last week, Nicole was laughing at me because I felt like I was driving a small bus, and it was just the three of us heading down there and back. So it's my hope that having something that's more relative in size when we have smaller groups of three to four, that we'll have a vehicle that's more convenient for them to drive. We've got a situation where Gary will, will take a transit van to go to an away game, and that reduces a fleet vehicle from the end to utilize when he's doing that, when he's taking it there so that he can be flexible to come back should something happen in one of our other sports. So.
This is just not for conferences or just local travel. I mean, we can utilize this for special education students. So, I mean, it's all purpose. So we just felt the need for a bigger vehicle, which is nice. We have comparable, we have several transits. If we look at an expedition, we have that third row that you're kind of climbing over getting into. Are we going to really utilize it? For the cost saving of this particular vehicle, it's a win-win.
This looks like a pretty good deal. Can board members work through the school district and maybe get one of them?
Excuse me. Sir.
Yeah.
I think someone answered my question, but these are not really, these are district use vehicles, but not so much student transport. I mean, they're not designed to take kids to camps or anything like that.
It depends on the volume of kids, yeah. I mean, it's really, it is for the, you know, conferences and the habitability where we had two folks direct to a pre-service camp.
From Colorado, they drove a transit van. We're trying to look at ways to.
So we have plenty of that type of transportation.
Yeah, if this replaces a sedan that was, it was aged and was in an accident last year, and it's also replacing a Suburban.
It self was aged and was utilized to, if I'm remembering right, this was a situation where they were taking items to recycling. So it was just, so that's what Nate was talking about, the special education uses. It was a vehicle that was used for that.
And if I recall, that Suburban, mainly half of it was back. I mean, it wasn't back. It wasn't seated. I mean, I don't think it was, if we correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it was the third row on that general. So we really weren't even utilizing that to as far as.
Yeah. Now I can picture it.
Yeah. I mean, and to be fair, Leanne and I actually talked about this morning. Do we, do we just get one? Do we need two? And during our conversation, we felt the need to, again, again, I keep going back to that price point. Because if we go to something else, we're going to be looking at that 40, 50, 60,000 potentially. I mean, depending on what you get.
He's going tires, right?
I do not. No.
Time to approve the purchase of two vehicles, two new vehicles quoted by Malloy Fleet in the amount of $24,656 times two for a total of $49,312 as part of Green Bush Cooperative purchasing state contract.
Correct.
Want me to take over the other one also?
No. Yeah, we're all with that one.
Oh, just, okay. Second.
All right, Tony has moved and Susan has seconded to approve, excuse me, approve the motion as presented, or excuse me, approve as presented, the two vehicles at a price of $49,312. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item four, bus disposal.
So Old Smokey, one of our beloved buses, has created a dilemma that there's a door mechanism that was not operable. And so we looked into the price of getting it fixed after hearing about the cost to fix it. This is actually the bus that when our Christmas gift bus comes in in December, this bus will be pulled out of fleet. And so the idea of entering repair process that right now, we know the amount is around $1,500. As they get in, history finds that there's other things that they wind up having to take care of just to fix the door. It can easily get up around $6,000 to $8,000. So Nicole, or Nicole Leanne and Nathan have been talking about what's the best thing to do, given the fact that we are planning to retire this bus anyways. Rather than invest more dollars in it, knowing that we are going to out, take it out of fleet in December, they're looking at disposing of this through Purple Wave. So at this point, I'll, if there's more you want to add or if I.
I think you covered pretty much everything there. I'll just, I'll just go over the actual items that need replaced, and we'll take about three weeks to just get a quote for these different parts. And that's not including, you know, actually getting the parts to the mechanic shop. And it's not something that our mechanic can fix. We'd have to take it to Kansas City and wait for them to fix it. And records show that it takes about a month at least to get something repaired there. So we're looking at a forward door leaf, an upper pivot belt, an upper pivot bearing. And like he stated, that there's other issues that could happen. Most of the time, there's a, there's a 50-50 chance that the window panes in the door will survive the repair. And so then you're looking about a $250 per window replacement there. This is also the bus, like he said, has been coined with the Old Smokey title. And that is because of ECU, it's a bad computer circuit. And so it kind of startles parents when the bus takes off and there's this huge cloud of smoke coming out from behind it. It's not on fire, it's just not working.
I just recently drove behind this bus and I was like, what's wrong with that?
I went straight to the district office or the bus bar to ask about it.
Yes, yeah.
Never noticed it before. So the environment will appreciate this.
Yes, indeed, indeed. So just based off of the timing and of getting parts to get it fixed and the timing of getting the new bus in, we just figured that we'd put this on Purple Wave and see if we can get anything out of it. If not, we can kind of parts it out and try to get a few hundred out of it that way.
Somebody might be willing to invest some money into it as a rehab.
Camper bus?
What's that?
Camper bus.
Camper bus. That's exactly the explanation that I got earlier today, so.
And Purple Wave is like an auction site or?
Yeah, an online auction site.
So maybe 500 bucks or 50?
Yeah.
Or 2,000?
2,000, yeah.
So Leanne, this bus is being used though now, right?
Not currently.
Oh, okay.
The doors are not operable, so we've taken it out of service.
All right. So, yeah, so it's just sitting around.
Yes.
Between now and December, we get a new bus? December, will we get a new bus?
So this is a 2009 model?
Yes, that's correct.
How many miles are on it?
Right around 200,000 miles.
Goodbye, Kelly. Purple Wave, duck.
But Kelly knows the guy, so he might-
There you go, there you go.
The wheels are turning.
Yeah.
I move we approve the disposal of Old Smokey Bus 1-09.
Yes.
Second.
Susan has moved and Kelly has seconded to approve the disposal of 1-09, AKA Old Smokey Bus. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, six zero. Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a restroom break? Can you keep rolling? Oh, we got yeses? Okay, I'm going to call a brief recess.
Given where we are with the transition with where the board is, I still think that it's worth having discussions with the bond subcommittee. And so what I'd like to do is continue to have those meetings with the idea that possibly with the next board meeting, have a couple of different plans for the board to hear and consider, particularly for the three that are remaining, to be able to have some, some thoughts or ideas. So what I wanted to do, the, the idea of putting the bond subcommittee update here was, was nothing that I wanted to provide to you, but more so get a feeling from you as if, if you'd be good with that, because to, to the point that was made is, we need to have some ideas going, we need to have some plans, we need to start thinking ahead. The, the mill neutral number itself did change, and so I think it's a good idea to start proactively thinking about what that could look like. That's really all I had there.
And the bond subcommittee is just representatives from the board, is it also-
This is, this is Phil, Kelly and Kelly.
Just keeping information fresh, making sure that all of that is just available so that everybody has that and can do what they want with it, but I have no problem with that. Okay.
Do you want to keep the current membership or you want to swap membership out for that?
We can. It's up to you guys.
You want to take my spot?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like for that, like meeting that historical, so there's always some fellows here, but like, is there, and I can't afford, so is there, is there a reason to swap some of your members who are next to the board in January with Susan?
No. No. I don't know, because I would, it would take a lot to get me up to speed with all the committee has done.
Yeah.
But-
Well, give that some thought. I'm happy to give up my spot.
Well, likewise, I think maybe though we should mean to, if that's going to be the plan, we almost need to have a meeting to put together the transition to bring it to, you know.
I think that's the path.
Because right now, we don't really have a main pass off.
Right.
That makes sense. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, because I've been thinking like post-January, whatever, I mean, we're going to have four new board members here to participate in that, in that subcommittee, as well as, you know, the outreach for engaging with some of the voices who wouldn't know last time we're around. Say, how can we modify this to, to be more pleasing to them? But also, because I mean, it's in our five-year plan to do the bond. Like, it's not something we're going to, this is not just a one-time, we're done with it, we continue to put that to the forefront of our community, because they've asked for us to be there. If the package was too big or wrong, something's happened, we need to rehash that.
And we just want to be able to pass that off thoughtfully, in a way that's not just, you know, here.
Like my notes did.
So that we're, we're doing our due diligence and being thoughtful about the transition, not in an assumptive way or anything like that, but just in a, in a thoughtful way that helps facilitate whatever transition may or may not be with all of that, so.
I like that idea.
So we can circle back like in November or something to see where it gets standing and take that baton and go with it.
Awesome. Thank you. New business? We have none. Board member, I mean, board member input in our local report.
I missed last meeting, I was virtual for a bit.
You were there. Yeah.
I was on a little box.
You were on a little box. Yes, we met last Tuesday, and our, our new assistant director has hit the ground running and reported to us that he's put in for a grant to, I've forgotten what the grant is for.
It's a connect for mental health services.
Yeah, mental health services in general, right. So, so, so that was the big news from this, from this past meeting. We are starting the process of doing the evaluation of the director, and so that, that is moving forward. But really, despite the fact that the interlocal is not fully supported by the state, we're in a surprisingly good, good situation. All, all the positions are filled. It's, I continue to be impressed by that board as well as this board and how well it operates under, under trying circumstances, so.
And just as a comparative point, I was working with a district today in Jefferson County, who has 40% of their special education teachers on a waiver, like they're not certified as special teachers, they are either Gen Ed certified, or they're coming from, or from other professions into special education. We don't have that issue here, we've got certified. After the, I mean, there are some folks on waivers, of course, but it's not 40%. So we've been very fortunate here for recruitment, it's sometimes a case of stealing folks from the districts to come into our, our work with our kids, but we're in really a pretty good spot for having certified, well-trained folks to work with our kids, so.
We have to take in the grant, what did they, what did they say?
Well, so, so as Chris said correctly, it's for general mental health services. One of the, one of the things that they're going to try to do with the grant money is to train trainers so that it can continue after the grant money is utilized. The best thing about this is the new assistant director was an evaluator for, for this granting agency for a period of time, and he did that deliberately because he's seen grants that are awarded, and he wrote it specifically pushing the buttons that, that grant reviewers want to see. And so, so we're hopeful that that's going to come through, and that's going to be additional monies that we can use. Part of it is working with Burton Ash, part of it is, is having other programs that, that will be throughout the interlocal, yeah.
And, and for the board, we put Ashley and worked with the principals to put together a grant application for it, for that same grant as well, as looking at what we could do to enhance what our student success staff is doing, in, in an effort to try to think forward as the, those positions were funded with the Esser dollars that expire in December of '24. So we're, for our particular district, we were, we're going after grants locally ourselves to that end, so. Just wanted to be upfront with you.
Awesome. When are those due?
15th of September.
Oh, okay.
Last week.
Okay, got it. Well, thank you.
And, and the assistant director did work with Ashley and approved for our-
Right, we're not in competition here. We're, we're actually trying to cooperate.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Miscellaneous. Does any board member have miscellaneous? Mr. Dodge, do you have miscellaneous?
I do have miscellaneous.
My miscellaneous is related to your miscellaneous, I'm going to let you go first.
So I'll let mine miscellaneous go first.
Yeah.
So as part of our strategic plan, it is included in there that there are board tours of the facilities. And tonight's example of eBay is one of the great reasons why I'd like to get our board members in to see our facilities. And there's, there's two ways to go about it. One is to create a, a special meeting where all seven are present to go through the facilities. We would start for breakfast over at the primary center, and then spend some time there, where Nicole would talk about some of the successes, would show us some, some needs that are there, and spend maybe 20, 30 minutes looking at some of those things. And then we'd move on to the intermediate center and do something similar in terms of seeing some showcase items that Dan has here, and then looking firsthand at some of the needs that are there. And then we'd move on to the junior high, into the high school, and if we time arrived for high school, we can then experience lunch. And so you could experience some of the, the new things our food service staff is, is putting in place for, for lunch over at the high school. And so that would conclude around lunchtime. And then from there, a couple of things can happen. You can debrief what you saw right then and there and call it a day. Or we could create opportunities for you to shadow a couple of classrooms in the district to see some, some of our teachers that were doing their best with our kids. But then, we still wouldn't want to have some sort of debrief, just to talk about what happened. That's one model. So you get it done in one day, it's a special meeting. It's a long day, but it's a fun day, it's a productive day. Another option is to meet in groups of two or three, and we would do something very similar, but it would just be in isolation. That particular, grouping groups of two or three would not require a special meeting. Because the debriefing is an important part of that, we would then debrief at the October board meeting. So the dates that I have on my calendar, that I think would, would work good for this, would be October 2nd, 4th, 6th, or 9th. And so I'd really like to be able to get something scheduled for this, to be able to, to do, to get these eyes on some of the great things that are taking place. So my question to you as a board, do you want to do this as a special meeting and do it all together? Or do you want to do it in small groups and then debrief at the regular meeting in October?
Would you mind sending the dates?
2nd, 4th, 6th, or 9th?
I only have one of those dates available, so it might come down to us, hoping available on the same date if we're to do it together. The 2nd.
Your alcohol? Yeah, both weeks.
Your what?
I'm working.
You're working.
I think many sessions are already better than one day.
The next, the next chance I would have to do something during the day would be the week of the 16th. But I've got this week in our board meeting.
Could we do it as November 2nd? To, I mean, if we all did it together, we don't have to have meeting time to worry about collaborating around, it's a special meeting, right? Well, the week of the 16th.
Yep, I just put together those dates in October, just to get the conversation going. If there is a, I would prefer to do a date where everyone could be together and, and make the-
Me too.
So, from there, it would be what date works best for you, and I'll make it happen on my end.
Or about on the 16th, and then maybe that night.
I need to see Friday's journal.
The 16th is the one-
The days when I'm teaching.
The 16th is our board meeting.
So we're going to meet all day and return when we're back.
That would, if you chose the 16th, that's what you would do.
Yeah, I guess we could-
But you're, you're available any day that week. So for me, I've got that, I could make any of those days that week work.
Which one? Tuesdays and Thursdays for Tony.
The 16th, week of the 16th.
Okay.
So how about the Thursday, the 19th? Oh, you can't, the 17th?
I could say.
I can.
What, what am I hearing?
October 17th.
Lock it! So Tuesday, the 17th.
Tuesday, the 17th, sound good? All right, Tuesday, the 17th, Megan.
So let me ask a question, now that we've decided it, now I'm going to throw a monkey wrench. If we do a special meeting, I mean, all meetings are always open to the public as they should be. If we have a special meeting, and whoever wants to come to a special meeting can come. And if we have people who come, then do we have 20 people parading around the school? Well, and just being able, observation and, and all of that, that's something to think about. Not that there's anything wrong with that, it's just a different size.
Could you say in that setting that because of the constraints that are on this meeting, that we would need to sign up in advance so that you could, so, so you could decide ahead of time, like, okay, how many people are coming? You know, maybe we divide it into groups, or we can-
Well, that's why it would be important with, and that's, those are just things we need to check on, because public is always public, but there's also safety and security issues if we're going to be in and out of buildings, and I just want to be thoughtful of. That's why it would be very important from an agenda standpoint, that there would be no discussion among, I mean, yes, we can all be there, but we're not going to have any discussion, there's no action items. I mean, that would have to be very clearly stated, but just from a procedural standpoint.
Can we rotate in groups of two or three, remember within the buildings that day? So that we're not, we never have a forum in any building.
Yeah, then you're going to have the same, you're going to have somebody having to give it their little spiel three times, or two times, to enhance the part of the staff.
And I don't want, I don't want, and I don't care, like, hey, my thing, pay, more the merrier, but from a staff standpoint, I don't want to inconvenience or be a considerate staff. I think it would be awesome.
Why don't I, why don't I look into that piece, and then I can communicate that to you via email?
We can like stream it YouTube somewhere.
There, yeah.
Like that's what we do, meeting?
Yeah, that's true. Nate's offered to be the cameraman, so, yeah, I think it would be, I, I think it would be awesome if we were all together.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I would have really thought about that. Like, it's a public meeting, so folks need to be able to attend that, but in the school.
In my, in my previous districts-
All right, so related to that, that's why I wanted to make sure everybody got a chance on that part first. Superintendent evaluation. So I wanted to just as a courtesy ask you guys what your preference is. We need to, we're on schedule to complete that, to review and present that at our regular meeting on November 11th. But my question is, do we want to complete the evaluation itself during our regular meeting in October, which is the 16th? Or do we want to have a special meeting to complete the evaluation?
Can you say November 11th?
Yes.
That's the.
Oh, do I have the wrong day? Sorry.
Okay.
Pardon me, 13th I meant.
Okay.
Sorry, I misspoke.
But the October 16th meeting.
Yes, do you want to just do it?
The review session?
Right. I just wanted to ask what your preference was, if you're okay with just.
That's my opinion.
I liked how we did it last year.
Okay, and that's what we did, but also given that we're going to be together all day kumbayaing on the 17th, if the 16th is feeling too long, I just didn't want to.
The 16th one feels shorter than the 17th.
That's true. That's true. Okay, so we'll do all of that on the 16th and not have a special meeting for that, no problem. Okay. And then the final thing that I have here is that, as you all know, as school board members, we have three main jobs. One is to hire and evaluate a superintendent per what we just talked about. Another is set the budget based on the educational needs of students. Done. The other is to set and review policy. We never vote on policy without taking a look at it first, but a policy item that I did want to bring to you, to your attention and just gauge the interest to possibly, based on that interest, to bring to you at the next meeting and have staff work on something if you guys are okay with that. It used to always be that in the state of Kansas, school board members could not be paid, and that has changed. You can actually, that's something that districts can do. Now, I'm not saying that anybody has an appetite to do that or that any future boards would have an appetite to do that, but I would really like to ask you all to consider bringing to a policy that prohibits school board members from being paid in USD 348. That is at the heart of service, as has been our history and our community. And again, I want to be really clear, it's not that anyone has suggested otherwise, but if you have something on the books, if there ever was someone who wanted to change that, which boards can always change policy, but if you have a specific prohibition already on the books, that becomes a much harder thing to undo. And that has been a more recent change at the state level, so I wanted to bring that to your attention to see if you all would be comfortable with bringing a policy to you to consider for next month and also to discuss for a variety of reasons that I won't get into tonight, but I wanted to see if you had interest in bringing something forward next month to you so that it didn't hit you out of the blue, because it is a big change.
How much are we talking? Well, the board's got their own thing, right?
It's like Congress, right? Just take a representative. I'm a god awful president.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a worthy conversation. I mean, I'm also opposed to, if that's getting compensated for this, I think the argument on that legislation was, you know, we all just voluntarily took a day off of work because we have the financial means to do that, right?
Right.
If board members are compensated, that opens the door for more, potentially more diverse board that doesn't have the financial means that we have, I guess, as individuals. So I think it's worthwhile having a discussion about how we want to advance that.
And people are having that conversation, and that's why I, because that's a relatively new thing and some districts are beginning to talk about that, I thought it would be appropriate for us to talk about it, too. So, okay, then we'll bring, bring a discussion item for next month on that topic. All right, that's it. That's all I got. Superintendents' report.
All right, a couple of things that I wanted to share with you tonight, wanted to share with you that our district site council met this evening before the board meeting. Ashley Trop, our curriculum coordinator, is kind of spearheading this group. We had a meeting that we, where we discussed, the start of the school year, I shared kind of where we were with enrollment, I shared some of the new things taking place in terms of pathways over at the high school, our work to establish the agriculture education program, soon to be ag sciences pathway with FFA, as well as the law enforcement, public safety and corrections pathway that we implemented this year, our work in implement this year. Talked about the Bay as a renovation piece and the motivations that that has provided the staff. And Susan also pointed out the idea of helping students feel welcome also has a high effect rate in terms of what Dr. Hattie's work shows. So it was good to have some conversation there. Ashley then talked about the teachers of the year, where Aaron Scott and Eric Bailey, we announced them at convocation and we surprised them with their families on stage as they were announced. And the cool opportunity this provides them as being not only leaders for our district, but also getting to hear from others, district leaders, other teachers who are leaders for their district and bring some of that knowledge back to us. We also talked about our accreditation process, our school improvement process that is KISA. We talked about how we are in year two, but year two is considered a learning year with accreditation. They're changing their format, they're going towards a cohort model where instead of having an outside visitation team come in and provide feedback and then leaving, you have a peer cohort model. So our service center and Lawrence at Greenberg Service Center will meet with other districts that are going through their accreditation process in the same year that we are, providing feedback from those that are actually doing the same things or operating at the same time that we are and providing that real-time feedback and getting to hear other perspectives. Lee Hansen will still serve as our OBT chair. I call her our KISA coach in terms of the feedback she provides, and she's phenomenal. Last spring, we established our district goals, our district level goals, where 90% of our students are identified as low risk on our social emotional screeners. We'd like to see 80% of our students scoring a two or higher on the Kansas State Assessment or 23 on the ACT. And as a reminder, a two is based on the definition by the state that shows the basic skills necessary to be post-secondary ready, college and career ready, if you will. And then we talked about the third item, our third goal that we have, by the 27 reporting year, all of our goals are by the 27 reporting year, so they do follow that SMART format, that by the 27 reporting year, we'd like to see our graduates have either six college credits or an industry-recognized CTE certification, a career technical education certification. Both would help them enter the next stage of life, whether that's entering the workforce or going to college, or if it's going to a tech school or a trade school, providing them with an opportunity to be successful. And if they're going to a gap year, we can help establish a certification that can help them make a decent wage while they're, while they're doing so. Or maybe they just know what their career interests are and they're ready to go after it, and the CTE certification can help them get there. So that was the process we've got, so we're in year two. The feedback loop will come as a peer model or a peer coaching model there. We talked about the programs and initiatives that are underway. Again, we talked about the pathways that I just mentioned with ag and public safety corrections and law enforcement. We talked about the work we have been doing with TASAN, or the Technical Assistance Support Network, where last school year was a realignment year, but we were able to provide a systemic approach to how we support student needs when they need, when they need a little bit more or if they need some support. And again, that's a process that's for all students. Our target this year is to do the implementation side with regards to social emotional learning. That is something that all teachers have the ability to impact, and so it's a great way to get that foundation, that structure in place. Where we're going to the next step of support for administrators is the, what's called professional learning communities plus, and that is something that TASAN also provides training on. And again, that is Amy De La Rosa, who was with us last year as we did our alignment. She's now continuing our work with our admin team to go through that process. There are five essential reflection questions that we want our schools to be asking so that we know we can determine what we want our students to know and be able to do and what our responses are going to be when they know it or if they don't, and then how are we going to relook at the instruction process we're using to make sure that what we're doing is most effective. And so we're excited about that opportunity. We started our first meeting with Amy and our PLC plus teams on the 21st, so that's a cool opportunity. That was our district site council in a nutshell. We talked a little bit in the questions and answer session about the payment process that we utilize. The recommendation or the feedback was try to get one mechanism for payment so we don't have one system for food service and then another one to pay fees. They, positive feedback on the activity pass that was leveraged this year with our junior high and high school students to help increase participation at events. But Ashley, did I leave anything off?
I think so.
Okay, so that was our district site council in a nutshell, Susan. Did I, as our board rep, did I cover everything? All right. The second item that I wanted to share with you was a reflection from last week. So last year, I mentioned that Amy De La Rosa worked with our admin team on our realignment process with MTSS. And she worked with us in basically a change process, helping us embrace change. And as an admin team, we worked really well coming together and through candor, through nonjudgmentalism, we were able to make effective change happen. We were able to be unified. We would have tough conversations, but when those conversations were done, we moved on. We knew that those tough conversations needed to happen, not because we were trying to point out flaws, but we were trying to get better. And we were trying to get better in all buildings, knowing that if, whatever we make in one building has an impact on another building, so we can become consistent. And so we were able to tell our story at the TASAN conference, so we were able to attend at no cost to be able to share that story. We provided that presentation on Thursday morning, and it was awesome to be able to be up with Derek, with Nicole, and with Ashley, go through and explain why we did what we did, and then how we were doing it and the what that accompanied that. And the biggest thing that we talked about was that idea that we trust each other and we know that we're trying to do what's best, and so there is no judgment there. And that candor piece of making sure that we are being honest with our conversations and not having meetings after the meeting, if you will. So it was, it was great to do that. While we were there, the first day of this conference, we got to hear from Dr. John Hattie. And he is, as Susan has referenced many times, known across the world for his meta-analysis or his just look, deep dive look into different studies regarding best instructional practices for students. If you're going to do a specific strategy, what is the overall impact? What's going to get the biggest bang for your buck? And sometimes this strategy, it may sound trendy, but it actually has a negative impact. And so we walk into this big ballroom and you see 1,500 chairs lined up, and your first thought is, okay, this is going to be a long day to sit and get, because this was all that was on the agenda. But before we knew it, it was lunchtime, and Dr. Hattie had just gone into all of his research, what the data told us, what the data's saying. And so we go to lunch and we come back, and he brings Dr. Alma Road from James Madison University to go in, and they're tag teaming now. And so now it's not just about, here's what data's telling us, but here's what you do with it, here are some examples, here are some ways that you can apply it. And it was fantastic. And the biggest takeaway, there were two big takeaways that I got from it. The biggest takeaway one is he's got a slide there in his presentation, Dr. Hattie did, where culture comes first. You've got to address a positive learning culture before you can get into the physical changes within instruction, if that makes sense. And so you, students need to feel welcome, they need to feel as though they belong. Staff need to know that they have value, they need to know that they have, they're trusted. Those are some of those essential functions that need to take place. That went into two statements within the research, and that's fancy word is efficacy, but honestly, that is just the belief in yourself or those around you to be effective and do what's best. And so when you talk about teacher efficacy, the collective teacher efficacy is we all together can do great. We all have the ability to help students learn and do what's right and do what's best. For student efficacy, it's that idea of every student can excel, every student can learn. They may have challenges, but they have the ability to learn. And when, when the student feels that and they feel it from their teacher, then that's where you get the biggest bang for your buck. And so those, those three messages from, from the first day were awesome. Breakout sessions on the next, on Wednesday were awesome as well, but, and they kind of splintered off of Dr. Hattie's work on those instructional practices. So just wanted you to know why I was gone most of the week last week with Ashley, Nicole, and Derek, and we had, we had a great time. And I'll be honest with you, I'd heard how great this conference has been in the past, and this is the first time I went, and it's everything that it was sold to be and more, and I'd like to figure out a way to get staff to it next year so that it's not just a presentation team going down. So, all right.
Did you mention that you presented?
I did.
And did an amazing job.
I didn't mention the amazing job part, but I did mention that I presented.
They all did amazing and represented Baldwin well and talked about change readiness, and it was very well received.
Yeah, I happened to be in the audience for this session as well as a secret board member as well, but it was just great talking with other non-Balwin educators about your session, and they were like, it's a good idea, we should try that in our building, too. So I was borrowing and stealing ideas from you guys as we were talking about building that collaborative team at the district level and how that has transitioned to the buildings as well, so.
Two of the, two of the things that I, that I have to really commend Ashley, Derek, and Nicole on is how we, when we had these meetings at the district level, they were not just doing what was necessary at that level, they were taking those practices back and applying them within their teams. One of the most important things that we do at our, that we learned from this meeting with Amy is all of our meetings start with, after we review our norms, they start with, all right, what is it we need to hear from, what is it we've heard from our teachers, our BLTs, building leadership teams, that we need to discuss before we get into our agenda? And then after we go through our agenda before we leave, it's, okay, what did we, what did we talk about today that needs to go back to our teachers and our building leadership teams? And we've got an action plan that's part of this meeting, this communication plan that identifies what we're going to share, who's going to share it, and when it needs to be shared. So we've got this accountability system in place, and it's not only helped us operate more efficiently at the district level, but it's taking place at their building levels, and they're seeing those benefits there as well. So it's been awesome.
Thank you so much, and thank you for representing our district about.
You bet.
That's awesome. All right. Any questions about Mr. Dodge's report, comments, other than rock on? Okay. I have to, you know, one thing I've been so impressed with, with the number of new staff, and I heard this in a sermon recently, and I just loved it, but it made so much sense, but unity is not the same as uniformity. And what I, one of many things I've been really impressed by with the newness and everyone finds their way, the ability to have authentic, candid conversations, it's really, really hard if there's not a high level of trust, and that's hard to create right away. So I'm just particularly grateful for you guys figuring out how to do that and how to have unity. It always starts at the top, it trickles down, our students feel it, so thank you for everything that you do. All right. Executive session, we do have one item there. There could be more unless there's questions about the personnel report, but for now, I move, we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge related to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma, and the open meeting will resume at 9:23. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries 6-0. much sense, but unity is not the same as uniformity. And what I, one of many things I've been really impressed by with the newness and everyone finds their way, the ability to have authentic, candid conversations, it's really, really hard if there's not a high level of trust, and that's hard to create right away. So I'm just particularly grateful for you guys figuring out how to do that and how to have unity. It always starts at the top, it trickles down, our students feel it, so thank you for everything that you do. All right. Executive session. We do have one item there. There could be more unless there's questions about the personnel report, but for now, I move, we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge, related to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma. And the open meeting will resume at 9:23. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries, 6-0. [applause] We are at Consider Executive Session Matters, item M, with the Personnel Report.
Motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
Phil has moved, Kelly has seconded, to approve the Personnel Report as presented. All of those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries, 6-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Phil has moved, Kelly has seconded, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, 9:28. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.